Good evening, welcome to the February 1st, 2017 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Let me just read into the record that alternate Commissioner Philip Wessel is joining us on the dais this evening, however, he will not participate as all Commissioners are present and all agenda items are regulatory in nature, I think. Is that true? We don't have any discussion items today. But thank you for joining us.
Sure.
First up is the approval of our minutes from January 18th, 2017. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of January 18th, 2017, as written to the record. Second?
It's been moved in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. So that passes 4-0-1. Next up is our consent agenda, and there's one item on that tonight. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
There are not, very straightforward.
Okay. Is there a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as written in the record. Second?
It's been moved in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, it takes two signed permits, and tonight we have some concurrent applications, and I'll let Chris Berger present all of those together. Chris, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is the Gaithersburg Presbyterian Church at 610 South Frederick Avenue. These four signed permit applications come before the Planning Commission according to a section 24-212J, which requires the Commission to approve icons on signage. The applicant proposes three new permanent identification signs along South Frederick. Two signs are double-sided, as you see one of them here, and the third is V-shaped. And here's what the V-shaped sign looks like, and here's the other, a double-sided sign. All three signs include a victorial representation of the church's sanctuary. The applicant said the church has received complaints from motorists about the difficulty of finding it, and the signs are necessary to improve the church's visibility along South Frederick. A fourth permanent identification sign already exists on the property, but staff found no record of a signed permit. That existing sign includes an image of a rainbow with a ribbon and butterfly. And it should be noted that the applicant also has a sign at the north end of the property here, which I marked "sign to be removed" in your report, that they put up without a permit, and also has an icon of the sanctuary, but they indicated that they would take that down. And so we'd like to condition it that the approval of these four signed permits is contingent on them removing that sign. Do you have any questions?
No, so everything else about the signs comply with the regulations?
Yes, they do.
It's just the icon, okay.
I have a question about the north end sign, so you're saying it will come back again for reapplication?
No, I'm saying they will remove it.
Just totally remove it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any issues with butterflies?
Well, so that's a permanent sign, and it's a little temporary, but...
Yeah, I thought so too, but I looked back on Google Street View, and it's been there almost 10 years.
Really?
And it has concrete footer, so it is permanent, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But no, rainbows and butterflies are okay, it's ribbons I have problems with.
Oh, ribbons, really? Is there anyone in the audience that is here to comment on this application? See, no one, Chris, if you'd read the recommendation?
Okay. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted in the staff report findings and recommendation grant, signed 13140-2017, signed 13141-2017, signed 13142-2017, and signed 13199-2017, Gaithersburg Presbyterian Church signage, finding them to be in compliance with section 24-212 of the city code with two conditions, the first being the two sides of sign 13141-2017 must be separated by an angle of 45 degrees or less, in accordance with section 24-212A2 of the city code, and the second being property owner to remove non-permitted sign at the north end of the property before issuance of signed permits.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on the recommendation? Any issues with it as presented? All right, if not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted in the staff report, and the findings and recommendations grant, signed 13140, do we take them all together? Okay. 13140-2017, sign 13141-2017, sign 13142-2017, and sign 13199-2017, church signage, finding it, we approve that, finding in compliance with section 24-212 of the city code, with the two conditions that were written to the record.
Second?
It's moved in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council for CTAM-7467-2016 amendments creating consistent security and bonding requirements, and presenting from staff is Trudy Shores. Good evening, Trudy.
Good evening. First thing we need to find out is, how many of you were at the hearing? I forgot to check that. Okay.
But I watched it.
You watched it, okay. Did you watch it?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
Speak up.
Just wanted that for the record, that you reviewed the record. There was a joint public hearing regarding CTAM 7467-2016 on January 17th, 2017, and the Planning Commission held its record open until 5:00 PM on January 26th, 2017. There was one speaker from the public at the hearing, and there have been no further comments in the record. As was discussed at the public hearing, this is a project that staff has done to consolidate and do a comprehensive review of the city code concerning bond releases. And this portion actually removes it from the Planning Commission's review to where it has been enforced for the last 15, 20 years, so that it's collected at the time of site development permits.
And releases viewed by the City Manager's Office or the planning committee, yeah. Any questions about that? So recall, there were a number of points in there in the presentation for the hearing, but it was all, not to undermine the work that went into it, it was sort of a housekeeping type of thing, where the intent of the regulation really wasn't changed, it was just a little bit more clear.
It could be a substantial burden on someone who's trying to think creatively about a property, and so if we can push that burden to when there's a more serious, what we'll call it "serious" part of the process, and they've really invested into the process, and they have some form of entitlement from us in the Mayor and Council, then I think that's brilliant.
The other aspect of this is, it makes the different requirements for whether it's sediment control, streets and roads, and subdivision, whatever, all the same basic process.
Right.
And there were a number of changes to some other ordinances, but the changes here are consistent with that.
Good, good. Are any other questions, Concerners? So, did you actually get to the recommendation part?
No.
Please do.
So, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record, and the recommendations of the staff-recommended adoption of text amendment CTAM 7467-2016 to the Mayor and City Council.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the recommendations of the staff, I move that we recommend adoption of the text amendment CTAM 7467-2016 to the Mayor and City Council. Second?
It's moved in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, thanks very much, Trudy. Next up is a site plan, a site plan agenda, we have one tonight, and that's for AFP-7473-2016, 210 through 270, Caulfield Lane, lots 24 through 38, in the MXD zone, this is new architecture for remaining lots 24 through 38. This is an amendment to final site plan, and presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. This is for Amendment Final Site Plan Application AFP-7473-2016. The applicant is requesting approval for new architecture for the Devlin property, the subject property is located within the Watkins Mill Town Center subdivision, and is zoned MXD. To provide some background, the final site plan for the Devlin property was approved on April 21st, 2015, and was designated at the time as SP-6413-2014. The approved final site plan permitted the development of approximately 3.23 acres of land as a residential community, and it consisted of 19 front-loaded townhomes. At the time of approval, NV Homes was the intended builder for all 19 lots. Since that approval, NV Homes has completed only one townhouse stick, which included four townhomes. With that being said, the new builder for the Devlin property will be Craftmark Homes, and the submitted application represents their proposed architecture for the remaining lots. And then here tonight, to present the application, in answer to any questions may have, is Chris Malm from Craftmark Homes.
Great, thank you. Just out of curiosity, a technical issue, how often are the aerials updated that you guys use for...
Ours are a little outdated, we're hoping to get new ones this year.
So, you wait for someone to fly them, right? It goes into...
Yeah.
The state, we have a contract with the state of Maryland.
I see, okay.
And so, right now, we're tending to double-check on Google Maps, because it's more up-to-date these days.
Wow.
Paid for service.
I'm sorry, interrupted, where does that leave us? Presentation time, there. Good evening.
Evening, thank you for having us. My name is Chris Malm, I'm with Craftmark Homes. Here with me tonight is Steve Nardello with Classic, and Gary Underberg with Rogers Consulting. We're here today to talk about our site plan amendment to the Devlin property. And before I jump into it, I'm going to hand it off to Steve to give a little background on the project.
Okay, great. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Bauer, members of the Commission. My name is Steve Nardello with Classic Group. Classic is a principal in the ownership of the Devlin property. And as Greg mentioned, about a year ago, we were here getting the last section of the Parklands, which is well over 400 homes that have been developed over several years, get the last section approved, and finalize the build-out by NV. Once they bought the first townhouse building, opened their models, it became apparent pretty quickly that their enthusiasm for the market was overstated, and through a number of negotiations and alternative assessments, we came to the realization that NV was not prepared to recast their product to meet the market. So we agreed to separate and evaluate other alternatives, and we've settled on Craftmark Homes, we haven't settled, excuse me, selected Craftmark Homes, who we have known as a luxury builder in the marketplace for many, many years. We love what they're proposing here, we're anxious to get the last 15 lots finished up, it's in the best interest of the city, the neighborhood, and ourselves as well. And the picture that you did see is a bit dated, all the homes backing to the subject property have been developed and settled, and so really, this is the last phase. If you have any questions with me, happy to answer them.
Okay. Or to next, are you going to present the proposed elevations?
Yes, yeah. So, I'll skip just real quickly through the "about us" slide, since I was here just a few months ago. Just real quick, we're a privately-held local builder, built over 7,000 homes, including a quarter of which were in Montgomery County and several communities in the city of Gaithersburg. This is Summit Crossing, which was just down the road. We are proposing to change the lot-specific architecture for the 15 remaining lots on the Devlin properties. The width is the same, the configuration is the same, it's still three sticks of five units, the building fronts are sited in approximately the same locations, the main difference on the footprint is that our units are eight foot shorter. Also part of the site plan amendment is we're proposing to build a privacy fence along the CSX railroad tracks to mitigate visibility and safety concerns. So I have with me both black and white renderings and color, both of which I'll show you of the front, sides, and rears. So to start, I'd like to show you the black and white strip elevations of the three buildings. On top, I have the NV proposed architecture from the previously-approved site plan amendment, or site plan, and then below, we have our proposed architecture. As you can see, in general, they're quite similar, the width of the units did not change, the building heights are roughly the same height, they're within 12 inches of each other, the locations of the garage doors and front door locations are the same, the number of windows, as well, of their locations is very similar, and there's even certain architectural elements that are similar, like the reverse gables. That said, we obviously did make some changes with the intent of creating a more market-appropriate unit, that still meets the same quality of the existing homes in Parklands. We worked together with city staff to ensure our architecture is in conformance with the Watkins Mill Town Center design guidelines. In total, we came up with six different elevations, and no elevation is repeated within the same building, so each building has a unique arrangement and will look very different. The guidelines actually will allow you to repeat elevation within a building, as you can see, NV did, both end units are the same, so we're actually proposing more variety than what is required and what was originally approved. The guidelines encourage facades with a high level of visual interest, using architectural features and a variety of materials. We think we've achieved that. In terms of architectural variety, our facades feature reverse gables, shed dormers, protruding bays, and features over the front doors. We've also included a stone water table with brick above, which is an element specifically called out and encouraged in the design guidelines. Given the struggles NV had with their program, our intention is for the quality of our building materials, along with the increased visual interest of our design, to be perceived as an upgrade from what was previously approved. And although our units are distinct from NV's, the guidelines do encourage a diversity of architecture, and they also encourage new buildings to add to the community character without rigid uniformity of design. We believe the differences in our design add to the architectural variety of the community while still coordinating with the existing buildings. The takeaways from the next two slides are very similar, these next two basically show the other two of the three buildings compared to NV's. Next, I'll show a black and white of the rear elevations. We plan to offer decks and covered decks. This strip elevation is meant to be a typical one that would include a mixture of no decks, decks, and covered decks. The next slide, I have typical side elevations, which are split into two categories. Half of the side elevations are considered low visibility, which are on the left there, and half are high visibility. The difference is, we've carried the brick on the high visibility side elevations up to the gable, and these two optional windows on the low visibility sides are standard on the high visibility. We've also included the stone coins that you see here to transition the stone water table on the front to the brick water table on the sides. This next slide shows a call-out of the building materials. We are proposing a high caliber of building materials, similar to those currently found in the community. The fronts are predominantly stone and brick, with paneling on the bays made of either fiber cement or engineered wood. Our stone is real six-inch Carterock stone from a local quarry, and I have with me, when we get to the colored slides, samples of the brick that you can see as well. The rears, as well as areas of the sides which are not brick, will be lapped siding, and again, those will be either fiber cement or engineered wood. Since the NV product included a fiber cement siding, and we're proposing either/or fiber cement or engineered wood, I brought samples with me, in case you guys want to see them. We consider both to be very high-end products, we actually prefer the LP smart side, because it's a little more durable, has a longer warranty, and is aesthetically very similar. So, I don't think anyone will be able to tell the difference when it's up on the building. We'd like to build the LP, but we're not sure we can get it at a reasonable cost, so we've included an option for both. And if you guys would like me to pass these around, just let me know, I'll bring them Next, I'll jump into the color renderings. Consistent with the guidelines, we've used a variety of colors, including three different colors of brick on the front, and three different colors of siding on the rears. The guidelines prohibit the use of bright white, and encourage the dominant colors to be subdued and muted, which we feel that we've complied with. So I'll just flip through the other two as well, and I've also next got a picture of the existing NV stick on the Devlin property, just so you guys can see kind of how it will coordinate. So those are the three different buildings in the fronts. This is the stick of existing NV townhomes, and as you can see, they've got, you know, three different colors of brick, which I think coordinate with ours. This is a color rendering of a high-visibility side, and this one's a low-visibility side, you can see it just has less brick. And this is the rears, we've mixed three different colors, just to give it a little more architectural variety on the backs as well. Getting into the fence, the proposed privacy fence basically fills in the gap from where the existing noise fence ends, and we see that as a big deal for future customers in terms of mitigating safety and visibility concerns from the train going nearby. The transition point would occur in a low-visibility area of the woods, and it would be similar in height and aesthetics to the existing noise fence. This slide shows a picture of the existing noise fence on the right, and a rendering of the proposed privacy fence in the middle. They are very similar, the existing noise fence does have some construction details to it that make it very expensive. We talked to the installer of that fence, and basically, it would be cost prohibitive to do the exact same thing all the way through the woods, so we came up with a cheaper design that will look very similar, and we think the transition will happen back in the woods, and no one will really notice, and it'll create a big help to mitigating safety concerns, because the trains really do go right by the front of these units. So with that, let me know if I went by too quickly, any slides you guys want to see, but we'll just leave it open to any questions.
Where you have effectively a fourth-story dormer, those are all just decorative, I guess, those aren't...
Correct. It's our thought that these things have enough square footage that the additional cost to building a fourth finish level, we wouldn't recapture.
So when you, I think you opened with saying that you had made these a market-appropriate or something like that, what does that mean exactly?
So, just based off of our understanding, our sales folks, of what's in demand, what styles are in demand in the area, and also, given the price point, what's an ideal amount of square footage? There's diminishing returns on square footage, so we thought, you know, the additional eight feet on the back is probably not going to be worth it in cost to folks looking to buy in this area. So it was a combination of the aesthetics being appealing, and the square footage being in line, we think is a compelling value for the area.
And a price point.
And a price, yeah, exactly, yeah, keeping the price point.
Very good. Any...
Yeah, I'd like to know options on the bumpouts, and not just the ask, as you said, those dormers are going to be there, those are going to be part of...
Absolutely, the elevations will look how they will look. The only optional thing on the elevations will be the sides, windows on the low-visibility sides, and then the decks or covered decks on the rears, they may or may not be purchased.
My other question is, the HVAC units, where are they going to be located?
Those are shown on the rear elevations, this is the same place that NV has them, we didn't change that.
Just a little bit about the, you said, so it's eight feet in depth that's being removed?
Yeah, so NV is building a 50-foot-deep townhome, which is huge.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we're proposing to do 42 feet.
So, what's the square footage?
2600. Yeah, 2600, sorry.
All right, so the others are, were like over 3,000?
Over 3,000, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this application? So just please step up to the podium here, and name and address, or if you don't want to give out your address, the neighborhood, please.
Hi, my name is Lynn Tucker, I am a resident of Parklands, my address is 394 Lady Fern Place. I'm also a Realtor, so I do a lot of transactions in the community, and hear a lot of feedback from potential buyers. I want to start by saying, I think this design is beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. However, I don't necessarily think it's consistent with what we currently have in the community, and one of the things, one of the comments that people make repeatedly to me is what a beautiful community it is, and they love how everything is consistent and everything flows together. And I think that's important, I think important feedback for you guys to have, if you really are trying to appeal to the buyers that are out there. We had, well, not we, but the Covenants Committee from our community had the opportunity to review the plan, and gave some very specific, and not big, small recommendations, and I don't think any of them really were incorporated into any changes for the plan. And I know that the letter is in the packet of information that was posted online, but one of the things, I'll just say, three things that I think are of concern, one is the, there's quite a bit of contrast in this plan, which, again, I do think is beautiful, but the amount of contrast that is here is inconsistent with what's currently in the neighborhood. The overhangs for the doors, it's a little thing, but they do kind of stick out, and then the garage doors, every garage door in the community is the same color, except for these that are proposed. So, overall, maybe small things, but I think it would have an impact on the overall aesthetic of the community, and those of us that care think that that's important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Feel free, yeah, please come up.
Good evening, my name is Jose Contreras, I live at 336 Parkview Avenue, and I'm also the treasurer of the Parklands HOA, also known as Watkins Mill Town Center HOA. I want to reiterate again, I think the design is a beautiful design, definitely a lot of work has gone into it, but I think I also want to, from the assessment that the board took, again, I think consistency is one of the things that we really look for. We want these homes to be built, we want our community to be complete, but we also want to make sure that when people go through the community, that they see it as a cohesive unit, they don't see it as a hodgepodge of houses that kind of just got bundled together. We do have some historical precedent in where there are some homes over on the Forest Preserve side that were built that are slightly different than what NV built, but you could tell that there was definitely an effort there to make sure that they were consistent in terms of the types of materials that were used, the general architecture, definitely color scheme, there's, you know, as has been mentioned, the cohesive color scheme, the palette, and the styling that was used. One of the things that add to the aesthetic of the community, and looking at specifically that these houses are being built on the Devlin property, which is already in close proximity to a bay of houses that is slightly different than NV, but still generally cohesive, to add another change architecturally to that could actually negatively impact that area, in that you're going to have three, when you look closely, three different approaches to that. So that's one of the things that we would like for you to take into account as you evaluate this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is Jeff Novati, I live at 415 Greenbaum Lane, live in the Parklands community, and I currently serve as the Vice President of the HOA. Again, we are very excited to have the community completely finished, it's been quite some time. I would love to have the rest of the back there paved and everything on the Forest Preserve side, but we would love to see some reconsideration for the color of the garage doors, as was already mentioned, white specifically, or some type of beige and not maroon or mauve. In addition to the overhangs, not a single townhouse in the community has them currently, and I'm sure it could be a nice cost savings as well by not having to install them, but I do think that they would stick out quite a bit. So if those items could be met, it'd be great to have those townhouses built, in addition to making those changes, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Come on up.
David Myers, I live at 522 Grand Street in Parklands as well. The only comment I wanted to make in sharing with what else has been made is, I think the wall is an amazing thing that you guys are doing. We really do appreciate that, and that, you know, I know that a lot of people are concerned about kids and other factors and things that go on, so we appreciate that you're taking that into account. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other comments? All right. Let me follow up on a couple. So, Greg, I guess at a procedural level, what is the, I guess somebody mentioned the Covenants Committee or the HOA in terms of designer view at this point, are they in control of that yet, or has been turned over?
The property has been annexed into the HOA, under the Watkins Mill Town Center HOA, but within the covenants, there is a clause, correct me if I'm wrong, that says that the builders do not need HOA approval, they're not under the same guidelines or requirements of the Architectural Committee of the HOA.
Sure.
Yeah, standard practice in governing documents is that the builders are exempt from the architectural control guidelines of the community.
You should never let that happen.
But we...
First person.
We are very interested in building a beautiful community, in having well-appointed homes, and delighting our customers.
Okay, was there a meeting, though, at least an informal meeting, to do a review and get some feedback from the neighbors or from the HOA, was that a part of the process?
There was not a meeting, we submitted the architecture to the manager of the community, and she presented it to the appropriate folks on the board, or the committee.
Okay.
And they provided feedback?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess... So yeah, I guess that's what I was going to next. Somebody referenced a letter or...
There is a letter that's within your packet. It's exhibit. Give me a second here. Eleven.
But was that before or after what we're seeing tonight? So was the proposal tonight representative of trying to account for that, or are those comments on the proposal tonight?
Well, then Exhibit 13 comes in and they're defending their current design with no changes.
That is correct.
Some arguments on Exhibit 13.
That's correct.
Okay.
So they are reviewing, they reviewed what you were reviewing. No changes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No questions.
No questions. I just have a comment, or a couple of comments, actually. I understand the intent from the applicant to match the architectural standards. However, I'm sorry if I'm being too blunt, but it seems like death by a thousand materials. I think that you're trying to accommodate too many variations, and I think it's become an expectation of this local market to have as many, such an overwhelming amount, if I may say, of materials, which is not only too much in the context that you are on right now, but also it's environmentally unsustainable. You know, when we look at our practices and how all of those things are allocated, I think that it behooves us to be a little more responsible in that sense, and I'm speaking to myself too as an architect. But, and my other comment is, it's more to us as a commission and to the city. I have a very strong issue against this particular building type of having a townhouse with a garage in the front. However, I understand that this has become a common practice, and particularly in this location, I have to say that I strongly disagree with the practice of having garages front loaded, townhouses front loaded, but given the specific of this location, I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one quick question. About the garage color. Did you, did you feel that that was too much of a contrast of what you have to consider?
I'm sorry, with what we have?
One of the concerns was the garage, the color of the garage as it coordinates with, and I guess being harmonious with the existing community. That was something that, one of the...
Yeah, we have a picture of the NV. The NV garage doors are actually not painted, and that's purely about cost. If you go into any large production, and I'm saying the rest of the Parklands is like this, but typically, large production builders will save costs by doing things white, because often they don't have to do any painting. It says right on the original site plan application that NV did, garage doors will not be painted. As I said, we were trying to create a sort of higher-end feel and have the garage doors match the trim and have it be painted a certain color.
They have a factory finish. I mean, they...
It's a factory bright white finish. And I will say in the design guidelines, they specifically talk about not using bright white. So again, we were trying not... Okay. Well, we were trying our best to follow the guidelines and create what we consider a marketable unit. And then I did bring with me some other pictures of townhomes in the community. And, you know, as an example, this bay right here is certainly a beige of some color. You can see the windows are true bright white. And so the beige colors, I think that we're introducing are an earth tone that is found in other houses throughout. Here's a single family in the Parklands that's a beige color. So we didn't feel that we were introducing something that was completely new. And at the same time, we were sticking with the design guidelines, which calls for subdued colors.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one comment.
Sure. We're all friends here.
And for the record, as we introduced, it's also when they pick up...
David Myers, 522 Grand Street in Parklands as well in Gaithersburg. What's interesting about the neighborhood currently is that every garage is in the back. The way the whole neighborhood's designed, everything you see from the front are all the front of the houses. This is just the one part of the neighborhood, because I'm assuming the elevation or whatever the reason is, where the garages are actually going to be in the front of the homes. And I think that's another big difference with why we're kind of bringing the comments that we're bringing. But I also understand why you picked what you picked, and maybe those colors could be more subdued to what's in the front of what is existing in Parklands today. I think that's a big, and a lot of the garages are actually hidden. You really can't see them the way the design was done. Just a thought.
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of points, I guess. You know, compatible doesn't necessarily need to mean similar and consistent, but there's some new competition in the marketplace right now that we're, need to deal with and acknowledge with Crown Farm, with Michael Harrison King Farm, with EYA on Shady Grove. So very high style and the great design is attracting, exterior designs are attracting buyers. And so we really like what Craftmark is doing. They were in the marketplace early with dark trims around windows and gutters and downspouts and things like that that are very different from the bright white that a lot of production builders do. So, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we end up this time with a successful, sustainable plan, program, and product line. Price right.
So you're saying that the paint color is going to differentiate the price range?
No, I think that people will recognize these as being high quality, high style.
We'll get into the discussion in a minute. Yes?
Hi, this is Jeff Novati again from 415 Greenbaum Lane, Parklands resident and vice president of the HOA. We made a decision to annex in this property into the community with the idea that you would also work with us, but the fact that a letter that was from our covenants committee that we took some time to actually review was basically laughed at. You didn't consider any of the recommendations. I just find it interesting that none of those were even taken a look at. We're looking at colors here. This isn't a big deal. So it would mean a lot to the community residents that you would respect some of the quality work that's gone into some of the items that we've spent some time on. So, thank you.
You'll have to come to the mic and introduce yourself, please.
I think I can fill in what he's saying. We didn't, by the time, it's important to us to get on the February 1st planning commission hearing so that we can hit the spring market and get rolling. In order to change a base trim color from one shade lighter to one shade darker, we have to redo all of our renderings. There's no way we could have gotten up here in front of you guys to do that. And the further we push back the approval on this thing, the less sense it starts to make for Craftmark from the deal standpoint. I mean, it was urgent that we get up here. So we thoughtfully considered every single one of the recommendations from the HOA committee, and I thoughtfully responded to every one of them in the letter. And as I said in the letter, we would much rather have the support of the HOA. We thought we were going to. We thought we designed a beautiful product. But realistically, what they were asking us to change, some of it was in conflict with what's in the guidelines, and some of it, like changing a paint color here or there, just realistically, we wouldn't able to make it work for timing how we needed it to work.
Greg, can you come up for a second? Just run down for me real quick what the, where they are in terms of the guidelines that have been adopted. Any testing, any edges on that at all?
No, staff's opinion is they are in conformance with the Parklands design guidelines.
As are the recommendations from, that were provided from the covenants committee. Nothing is outside the boundaries of...
No.
It's just a matter of shifting from one, within the guidelines to some other place within the guidelines, but they all...
Yeah, the guidelines do, I mean, they do recommend a variety of architectural styles. They do recommend a variety of colors and bricks as well. As I said, staff did look at the design guidelines concurrently with what they were providing or proposing. I may rephrase that. But our opinion is that they are in conformance with the Parklands design guidelines.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and move into the recommendation then?
Staff recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, finding the recommendation, grant AFP 7473-2016. Devlin property, finding in conformance with sections 24170 and 24172A of the city code with six conditions.
Okay, so I've got, the first three really have to do with noise abatement or dealing with...
That's correct, and they are carryover conditions from the original Devlin approval.
Right. The new fence, I guess, is something that's really more about a technical site plan issue. Okay, thank you, Greg. All right, so thoughts on the proposal, please?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a matter of priorities here, and I think you've got common priorities. And that is, the residents want this completed. They've been looking for this neighborhood now for five, six, seven years, and it's been incomplete. Now we're going to complete it. The builders come before us, the petitions come before us with a product, products in conformance, basically with what is required of a builder to go into this neighborhood. I have no problem with the colors. In fact, the point made about the garages being in the back for the most part, and these garages being in the front, I don't think you want to see white garage doors in the front. I think it mutes by putting the color consistent with the building. It mutes that appearance. It makes it more consistent with looking like a building, rather than a garage in the front screaming out. Consistency, neighborhoods are built over a period of time. It doesn't just happen all at once. And I think the idea that you've got inconsistency, but it's consistent with the guidelines, makes it interesting. And this development wasn't built, like I said, in a year. It took a long time, and you're going to have different products. So I have no problem with seeing a variety of products as long as the value is maintained. And that, I think, is a major consideration that we have to consider here as well. Is the value of the product consistent with the other products that are out there on the marketplace as well as what's in the development? And as far as I could see, knocking off the eight feet, I can understand that, so I have no problem with what's been presented.
Yeah, let me interject, but thank you for your comments. Let me interject one thing just to sort of set a framework here. Understand that in the context of an architectural review in a neighborhood or HOA setting, which happened throughout the city when the homeowners' documents either dictated or required or recommended, whatever it might be, and given that the process adopted in this neighborhood right now allows the builder to come forward with whatever their proposal is directly to the planning commission, one of the things that we're not necessarily charged with is architectural review from an aesthetic perspective. We make a judgment based on, or we make findings, I should say, not even judgment. We make findings based on an adopted design guideline. And while all of us would have an opinion about whether we like white doors or, you know, green doors, we'd be very careful, and I want to make clear to you, we're not going to express our own personal opinions about whether we like or not like what's been proposed here tonight, what our charge is. The city attorney is looking at me with very... Our findings have to be based on adopted, our adopted ordinances and guidelines that have been adopted for the neighborhood. So it's a little bit of a setup to say that we've got a fairly narrow focus or a fairly narrow purview on what we can approve or not approve. Having said that, one of the things that we also need to do, and what we also are obligated to do, is to be sure there is good neighborhood cohesiveness, and not only in just the aesthetic stuff, but the process. So what I'm a little nervous about is that this was sprung on the neighbors without necessarily having much of a preview or an opportunity to look at it at an informal level. Because consistently throughout the city, we expect, we encourage, we want that to happen so that there aren't these kinds of discussions where, I frankly have to say, there's not a lot we can do if the color, you don't like the color of the door. I'm not sure as much we can do about that. If it complies with the guidelines that have been adopted. On the other hand, it distresses me to see that that hasn't been looked at or hasn't been thought about and hasn't been, you know, discussed and sort of negotiated a little bit ahead of this meeting. So the discussion needs to move towards what our criteria is, and then we can see if there's any wiggle room for some of the concerns or some of the recommendations from the neighbor. Because I do respect that input, and quite frankly, these are the folks that are going to live with this building, these buildings for a long time. And, you know, they take a lot of ownership and pride in their neighborhood, and we need to respect that. So a discussion on the proposal then.
So this is the part in the process where I interrupt you and then give my personal opinions that you just told me not to give?
Yeah, yeah.
So we've got it down to a science of here, but the, no, I'm kind of kidding. And actually, I think after Lloyd's analysis, I think all I'm going to add is that, in my mind, sort of to tag on to what the chairman's saying, is that I think there's some financial and ownership arguments that have been made that support their choices in how they want to put together the product that they're building. And if there wasn't, I'd be much more hesitant to approve, but they're making a commercial argument in defense of their choices, right? So at the same time, I kind of want to reward people. It's one of the biggest crowds that have come out for aesthetics. Like normally, it's, you know, it's too close, too far, it's too big, it's too small, whatever. But to come out for aesthetic reasons, like I just want to pause, you know, I want to yay and give you guys candy. But the idea, but, and if their idea of what is aesthetically appropriate, it certainly falls within the guidelines, frankly. In fact, it may actually comply with the guidelines a little bit better than the rest of the community. But that they have defended it based on their wants and needs economically, it wins me over to say that even though I'm going to add this to my growing enormous library of things that I would not have designed, it is, it is, it is their choice if defended on economic grounds, and it still meets our approval guidelines in my mind. This is an additional twist.
All right.
Any other comments?
Well, I mean, I enjoy the comments, and I asked the question because I wanted to know, had it been considered? And clearly, there was some consideration. I'm not sure about the timing of that consideration. But it is, you know, it is important that we don't hinder, you know, progress. And it's been a while, and this has been sitting out here, and there was some churn with the other organization that was looking at building. So, you know, while there are some concerns of the existing neighborhood, I am concerned about them going into this with a negative or bitter taste in their mouth. And that's not our, you know, that's not something that we can legislate here. But I just wanted to say that, you know, making a personal comment. But, but, you know, I'm looking at, you know, we have to cite, you know, the guidelines and also, you know, is it harmonious and congrues with the current situation? It is. It's not, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs a little bit with the colors, but it is harmonious. And I can't see a reason, a definitive reason why we can't move forward. Just have to say that. But I do appreciate everyone coming out and making their opinions, you know, that is why we're here.
I just have to, like, agree with everybody else who's spoken before me. I think in an ideal world, I would have wanted you guys to go before the community and speak with them directly and work it out before you came before us. Obviously, the process doesn't require you to do that, so we're here and we are, our task is outlined. And I think that everything is in conformance, so in a sense, that's where we are.
I would like to make a recommendation. I don't know, and I don't, I'm really worried about whether or not these renderings have to go into your collateral tomorrow for sales brochures and all that. But what I do...
Don't care, right.
What I do care about is that there is, that you afford another opportunity for some of this discussion on color. We're in the guidelines. I mean, I don't see anything to say that we can, you know, we don't approve the color. And we wouldn't say yes or no anyway. It's a guideline issue. That's why we did the design guidelines for the neighborhood, so we weren't sitting here, you know, looking at color palettes and trying to decide if it was the right color or not. But again, I really want to emphasize neighborhood conservation, not in the green sense, but in the social sense, and that it's very important right now for you to develop a relationship with these neighbors and the existing neighborhood. And I want to see another round of meetings, not, I'm not going to make, I'm not recommending we make the approval contingent on this. I'm just making it a condition that you all work with staff and with the neighbors in the right context to discuss one more round of color selection that might feel a little bit better to those that have some eye for the neighborhood right now.
Right. It's goodwill. It's goodwill.
Absolutely. But I'm not recommending we hold up approvals. If you all are ready to move forward, I don't see any way to make findings that we can't move forward.
We can't, we can't hold up.
But I do want to wrap a condition around it, that there is another look at the color selections. The architecture, I think, you know, we could make the argument that it's not exactly the same as what's there, but I think in terms of the language and the patterns that are established in the neighborhood and other residential areas here, it's very consistent and very compatible. It's not the same. I get that, I understand that, but for some, that's okay.
I just want to confirm, you're suggesting add a seventh condition. Is that correct?
I'm recommending it. I'm not demanding it. I'm saying if the commission agrees, or if you think there's an opportunity to do that, if the applicant agrees.
That's a wacky.
You're saying not make it a condition, just a recommendation?
It's a recommendation.
Couldn't make it a condition.
It's been conveyed.
But if the applicant says to me, yes, we're happy to work with the homeowners to take another look at the colors, and it's on the record?
We'll look at the colors. I don't want to call it a recommendation, but I have to sit down with nice folks. with nice folks.
Hang on a second.
You've got to come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Kim Ball. I own Craftmark. Chris is my son. We've been doing this for a long time. We actually did send this to the HOA early on. But HOAs only meet once a month. I understand they can't meet very quickly. And when did we get finally that letter? But we basically were done with the design, had spent thousands of dollars in engineering and architectural fees.
All right. So let's-
But you don't care about it. I'm just giving you some context because we did reach out.
You said nothing in three sentences that help us understand that you're going to reach out to the community now.
All right. We'll talk to them about the trim color and the garage color. I'm not going to do white. I'm just not going to do that. Will we go a lighter shade of beige?
No.
Sure. But I don't want to wait 30 days, you know, to get that done.
So what we want to hear from you is that you have obviously a passion about the colors that you picked, and you have an economic reasoning for it. You've proved it to yourself. You're going to have to prove it to the market. Help prove it to your neighbors.
It may not work. The train shop may be too much.
You're going to have to prove it to your neighbors as well. So I think what we're looking for is you to be, and I haven't seen it, is you to be willing to sort of take that proof, that argument, in a sort of rational, economic way, as to why those colors make sense to you, and help sell that at the next HOA meeting, right?
So we'll talk to them again. I just don't want to mislead anybody. I know everyone wants to get along, and you want to do the flipply powerful thing. We will talk to them about the trim colors. I'm not sure if I'm saying it in a way that you want me to say it. But sure, we'll go to the next HOA meeting. Or I actually, I'd rather deal with a smaller group. They actually have a covenants committee I can meet with.
The other way we could handle it...
Do you have a second?
The other way we could handle this is we could defer approval until we get that agreement.
That's fine. And I'll have to consider whether we're going to move forward.
No, no, no. I would like to suggest that you will sit down and have a serious discussion with the community and the covenants committee. What I need to under... what we... I think we all need to understand is if we decide to make a change, do we need any kind of documented approval?
Not for color.
No.
Not for color. Okay.
Oh, no.
All right. If we decide that-
If staff decides it's relatively compatible to the existing approved design.
Staff's got latitude to take- Yeah, the only thing we would need is just an updated color chart. We don't need rendered elevations.
And we don't need it to come back here. It's just for the record.
Okay. And we don't need to come back.
So it's a recommendation.
Whatever we finally decide in a very short period of time, over the next week.
Work with the HOA representatives and, you know.
And explain why we-
Matt gave me the business case. I'm saying, take their considerations seriously. What maybe that could do to influence a final decision on color, maybe some trim detail. But the light stuff, you don't need to come back on site plan. And if Greg's comfortable with that condition or with that recommendation, we won't defer the approval.
I agree. I agree. I would make a recommendation, not a condition.
Okay. So it's a recommendation. It's on the record as a recommendation. We will condition the approval.
And we have consent from both parties that they will meet. It's on the record.
Good. Thank you. All right. So no more conditions.
Yeah.
Well, we need to craft the conditions so we make sure that we have that.
Craft the recommendation?
They're not recommending another condition. It's still six conditions.
It's six conditions with one recommendation.
We're just recommending that they know this.
Okay. Because I heard. I heard.
It's a recommendation.
I thought I heard you say it would be a condition.
No, no. Recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, as I thought I explained, we don't have a way to make findings that that condition is important to say on a legal level or on a-
Which is what's worrying Trudy.
Right. So they will be taken care of. All right. Is there any other...
No, I just wanted to make an notice. According to the state and city regulations, just so everybody's clear, unless guidelines from either the city or from the HOA outline specific colors, we are not allowed to regulate colors. So just to make that clarification for everyone.
For your information, what the guidelines do say relate to color, if I remember correctly, is that you can't have more than two townhouses within a stick with similar colors. So they can have two... with a similar color scheme.
So for Claire, there's a need to get the neighbors and you all together to think about the color palette. It's not... it's within the guidelines, so you're free to move forward. And that's what we'd like to see. Fair enough? Thank you for offering that. And any other concerns with the conditions as developed?
Nope.
Any other discussion on the application?
No.
Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendations, I move that we grant AFP 7473-2016 finding in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city code with the six conditions as written to the record.
Second. To move to the second, in all one favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass the motion. Thank you all very much for your help on this. All right. That takes us to from the commission tonight. May I ask for a few, please?
I just want to let everybody know that the Gaithers Planning Commission, the Kentland State Foundation have joined forces in a lecture series focused on retail. And our next lecture will be on February 21st. And we will be hosting Mike Watkins, and he will be speaking to the history of the retail, the retail history of Kentlands and Lakelands. So what it used... what it should have been, what it is, and how it developed.
February 21st.
That's exciting, yes.
Does that conflict with our meeting?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a mayor and council meeting then.
That's right, because on the 20th.
President's or Marley's?
My terrible apologies, but...
That's why I asked the date, because, you know.
And I also want to make... so also in conjunction with that, I know Kimco has advertised a forum as well for-
That same night.
February 27th.
Is it? Okay.
It's the 27th.
I thought it was the 21st.
No, it's the 27th. And so it's a paragon theater.
At the theater, right.
Yeah.
All right. So something to think about, kind of coordinating all those dates. Maybe we could get one cohesive announcement out on the site that coordinates that, Trudy.
I think that's...
Because we're helping.
We have a link in the past. That was handled with planning and co-director Schleckting.
Yeah, you have to fix it. I just... I think there's a lot happening right around that one, two-week period at the end of February. And just so it's clear for everybody, maybe we can get that on our end, too, calendar. Thank you. Matt, anything?
Nothing from me.
Lloyd?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of actually going with some of the city council members as well as citizens on Monday, the 30th, to Annapolis for District 17 Day. And it was extremely productive. It was extremely informative. And I would highly recommend that next year, when the notice is given out again that they're going to have a District 17 Day, that as many citizens as possible, go on this. It's really quite worth it. And if you haven't seen the state government in action, it's a good opportunity to see that happen. Informally, I would also like to say that I understand from very reliable sources that the Watkins Mill Exchange has been funded and that they will be letting contracts, I understand, with them in the next month. And it will be for all four ramps.
Oh, wow. Both sides?
Both sides.
Really? Wow.
Yes. So that's something that came out informally during our discussions. So I'd just like to bring it up to everyone's attention because it is a vital-
You should go to Annapolis more often.
Yeah.
This is becoming a hobby.
It's an old-
Lloyd does the representative.
I used to do those sort of things, anyway.
Thanks, Lloyd, very much. That's good news. Danny?
I went to my quarterly board meeting of the Maryland Association of Planning Commissioners, and they have some new and fresh ideas about how to engage planning commissioners from the various jurisdictions, specifically from anywhere outside Baltimore, East Shore, to get engagement. And I'm the only person from Montgomery County that's on the board. But I'm going to be coming to you all for your feedback and comments as they are coming to me and looking for engagement from other planning commissioners around the state. So I'll be reaching out to you all for your feedback.
Sounds good. Thanks for knowing that. It's great to have representation at the state level like that. Thanks for knowing that. Phil, this is the part where you get to talk.
My one shot to speak, and I really don't have anything.
Next time I know everybody's going to be here, I'm going to have to come prepared with a, you know, 15 minutes of-
Long die tribe or something.
Maybe bring a PowerPoint presentation.
Boy, that was a short speech.
All right, thanks. Trudy, what's the news from staff?
Well, our... I didn't bring the list, and so I'm going to-
That's fine.
I have something else, too.
Can't wait.
We received an email from Mr. Harry Criswell. Some of you may remember that in June of 2011, we approved a Fiat Service Center. And then it was changed to a truck center. One of the conditions, which I had here a minute ago, one of the conditions was that they had to submit a signed package for the planning commission approval in accordance with 24-212B of the city code prior to the final building permit inspection, so their occupancy. They came in with a signed package, and it didn't comply with the requirements of the city code. So he has sent an email requesting to modify the condition of the approval so that he would be required to submit the signed package prior to the release of site development bonds. And that would allow him to occupy the building that's already to be occupied, but still requires him to get the signed package in time. And he's-
What does that effectively do for an extension or a timing?
It gives him probably about a year to get it in. But he knows he has to do it, so...
Right. And the bonds are still, even though they're... would the bonds still be related to the signed permit? Would we still have to pull the penalty out of that bond?
The bonds are the site development permit, and it related to the approval of the site plan. And this condition is part of that site plan, so it's still enforceable.
Good.
So if I can get an okay from everyone.
That's okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Our next meeting is February 15th. And we do have a joint public hearing on February 6th. And I believe that Lloyd will be absent, so Mr. Wessel will be joining the commission and the mayor and council at the AS.
And that's going to be a meaty one. So put your thinking caps on and read the package.
I'll be writing my comments to Jasmine.
Right. And we'll enter that into the record. The package, of course, is not up yet for the mayor and council, but there is a project page which has all the exhibits. I would direct your attention to the last few exhibits because they did respond to some after several meetings with the Colonnade community.
Okay. The package for that will go up... that's a Monday night, right?
Right. It'll go up. It'll go up. Should be up by Thursday at 5:00.
Thank you, Frank. Anything?
No.
We tried to stay that narrow path of binding.
You did. Nice job. You all did very well.
And I wasn't staring at you that harshly.
Just waiting to pounce. All right, very good. If there's nothing else, have a good evening. We're adjourned.